You're late, take a minute.
How are you up?
I'm up for it. These are the, uh, they can water, the main treatment plants. I've been told they're not very good. So those are the plants, um, they came in from Tom. That's all I have.
So do you know how far along Tom is on his, what, what his time, does he have any timeframe that?
Um, yeah.
I know he wanted to do it five years ago.
Yeah, I, I don't think we'll be touching anything in 2020, FY '21 of that.
And, oh, so nothing until at least another year?
And that's for a lot of different reasons, but mostly scheduling. We have plenty of street projects going on. Take about this time, and then if we get that bridge over, then, um, that's the springtime plus his regular work. We do know that our Chapter 75 is subcar, I mean, sorry, Chapter 95 is subcar at 300,000, so it's not going very far.
Yeah, so, so he's probably looking to use the Chapter 95 next month. Is there, um?
And it's supposed to be done in parts too, because it's just so massive.
Because what did we say? It's, it's what?
Three hundred dollars.
So it's gotta be, it's gotta be a long project, so.
So how much shall already are you to do it?
We're not, we're not.
And I know he's been waiting for us for as long as he can, and we're gonna go through the process. I think one of the things we need to do is first talk to Pat again and see if there's any funding out there for us to get for.
Well, we have MassWorks for this project.
Yeah.
And then if we partner, as the town and the site water district are done, we have a pretty good, uh.
So are you familiar with the whole MassWorks thing?
I mean, I know it's a lofty, lofty endeavor, and they're due in August, so it puts a really big timeline on us.
All right, can you find out what information we need to get, notice, submit to MassWorks? I'm probably the best guy, and working Jeff, uh, to see what we can get.
I do have a copy of another town's, um, it's not this type of project, it's actually a sewer project, but they were successful in getting a MassWorks grant.
Yeah.
It was always made for like houses to see what they're.
I mean, even if we do get a MassWorks grant, I'm sure we're gonna be short of money anyway, so we're having to come up with another idea. And quite frankly, we need to, we need to push the can, pick up the can down the road with this, and we really need to step up the pace on it and get it fixed. So along with the MassWorks, we had enough of an internal payment to, to figure out if it's done, because it's obviously not getting any better. And all of everything else that's going on with the, the water treatment plants and everything else in town, it was just another, another feather in the cap for what we need to do, so.
Yeah, just talked to Chuck, our engineer, and I've been talking to another engineer, and you guys work with, or work with, or, uh, talk about, uh, he's kind of putting his, he's trying to look at the money. We're trying to, could you say if there was one of those, if you had land, if we had that enough, it's easy to get funded.
We had a very horrible problem and funded, but it's not bad enough.
And they like sewer too, for whatever reason. We have to come up with some, some reason for them to want to fund it, unless it's something.
Well, I have a sewer project, but.
Can you bring that in? There, there's probably, I mean, I give you a few ideas, it'll work for reality, as far as trying to get some.
So we know this, this engineering was done in partnership, so you're at least, you've got that under your job. I've been anticipating some sort of like stimulus package, I just, I know the EDA did something else, but, um, we are too rich of a town to offer that, I've already looked into that for some other projects, so that's a little off the table, but I do feel like something else will be worth trying. Keep my eye out for that. Remember that's a big way to go.
Just the sheer volume of projects that we need to do, this one might not be one that they want to help us with, but so what, right? I mean, it's, we might have, we might get funding for six other things.
I like some of the regional ones, technically.
Which one?
Uh, this one, because it's fewer distinct entities from you, so we are basically a region with the both of our parts together, and they like that.
Yeah.
And also if you, is there a store market component that only helps for running points?
Do you mean the branches thereof, or?
Yeah.
River Crosses?
Yeah. So there's certain tier, there's certain industries you hit to try to get as many points as you want.
So maybe one of the things that that can be, if you have, um, so we can just explain what his phases are, and they're laid out on there.
What is what, I'm sorry?
Phase, his phases.
Uh, I don't think that they're laid out on there, but yeah, that's right from Tom.
Yeah.
He had, he had wanted to get, I was the one that said no, he had wanted to put one block in for leaving, and I said, but that just means you're gonna tear up the seams and you're just gonna have more of a problem.
Any other questions, Al?
I don't think so, even if we don't get the grant, we have to come up with money to do it anyway, so we need, we have to look at both avenues as far as getting a grant and not getting a grant, so this is basically what we're talking about. I mean, like you said, we go to a perimeter just to see where it was gonna, a ballpark. That was, we knew it was gonna be this last year, we knew it was gonna be a big number, I'm sure that, it was.
It's three million, is it three million?
So that's saving between two and a half, by the time we're done with four.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be more than that.
Yeah. Basically, they, they stay in the normal.
And you do search it, right?
Yeah. But that, we don't get tied on, and stuff like that, you said search it?
Yeah, well, this thing like to, to tell the state, is the shuttle ready to do the curriculums, um, it's all part, it doesn't delay you. I'll think about it, I'll think of another way.
It's not the EDA, we got the. NASA's people, so. We could want to, 70,000 of them, other categories, 120,000 or whatever.
Yeah, rates that they have to adjust, not just that, obviously. How much are you?
1.7 million. Depending, and we should be able to get a really long district involved, and maybe we can do through, um, DEP or that one.
So you said you were speaking with Water and Burn, so they were just talking to me about the SRF, and then there's a water, a water grant steward, not just sewer? And they can submit a PEA, which is a project evaluation form, and you can see if your project fits it. It, it's a nice thing to do because it's sort of like a date, and if you don't waste and you spend a ton of money and time into a grant application, it's just a notification to see if your project has the master on the base of it. It's no obligation. You may want to ask them about that for this specific one.
And that's who did these claims, Al?
Uh, no, I think this was, um, I can't remember the name of the company, but it's Gori Delano, like, through this company, and, um, they did it. Sorry, I didn't have, I didn't have a rubber band.
My house went through it. Little sidewalks, didn't it?
We're realizing that we have to go first, so.
Yeah, and then. And then for us, we start doing that walkability pedestrian activities or sidewalks, they need compliance, we move forward with that on our end or anything.
Do you have to take any lands for all that, or?
Uh, I think some, which also extends our project, because we have to, our side, because we have to go and get the money to pay for, if it's a firm.
You have a whole like 3800, like, orders? Because we had just talked about, Jeff, I think, that was just from Al, like, the one.
Right. I think, I had the whole, I gave you the.
I thought it was all by the way, what you wanted, no.
Which I think is all.
Should be all of it.
It's just under three miles, we're down, it's like, under three miles, I think from Williams to, um, I'm gonna do.
Yeah, probably.
We gotta, we gotta count how many river crosses there are.
This is only nine. No, it's not nine.
Are there nine?
No.
There's some culverts there.
There's some culverts, yeah, yeah.
One, two, three.
Six.
Yeah.
Yeah, five, six, yeah. No, I just, uh, we'll, we're gonna start fast track, because we really have to, uh, and we put management in charge, and the time to do so. The point is time.
Yeah, so, I think one of the things, um, gotta have, you gotta have some kind of public air, so people understand, because you can't just put out that three million dollar loan. Um, you gotta start educating people, let it come, and we, we let it come, so. Um, I would say at the end of the summer, that, schedule something in the fall, it's a public meeting on the reconstruction of Lee Street, whether it be from the town side, including the water district, but do something to get, get the word out.
You need a timeline as well, will you be able to set a timeline? And that way we can, you know, give a reasonable expectation.
Thanks.
Absolutely, sorry. There's another avenue, I don't know if it will be successful, or what's going on at state level, but you can always ask for a head end, or some budgetary spending fund, and, um, that might be something that's easy for them to go down, because it's still less, it looks really.
Glad that for the wrong guy, I guess.
Yeah, I've heard that's what you said, you don't ask for anything.
Yeah.
Is that it, for me?
Yeah.
No, thank you. Next, Al.
Next up, we're down on Home Landing Street, Home Landing State. Which one's ten?
Yeah, that's block.
Ten block. Welcome.
Bob Berry, pro-engineer, redesigned the plant, led the ten hits of the world of thought many years ago. And it was submitted to the planning board, and they were approved, and they were approved through, I think, October of this year, without an extension. He hasn't done it for a while, but he asked to be on to the meeting because of his concerns, we do have interest in the house. The house is very old, 1624, William's old slow front, probably slow lived there. I think she passed away at 105, she lived there pretty much her whole life. So he has interest, somebody's interest in buying the house, so he may go forward with the project, but to do it, he would have to extend the water line to some way and a septic system. So I think the first thing we need is, is a schedule, like a fee schedule for the tying of fees, I think there was a loan going out from before. And, uh, the other thing that we were gonna question is, talking to some of these people in town, everyone in the, but he lives in back end. So, you know, some of the people in back end, but there was talk about, at one time, connecting this subdivision to John Street, which is the subdivision that we did probably in 2004, on the Palmer property, the Palmer and Moldy property that went to Old Williams Street. It goes into the farm, the Palmer Room, and then crossed into the Moldy Farm, and then came back out of a shop, not road, toward the Lewis Street, and the waterway was growing through there, so that's as far as the waterway goes. But there's a little dead end street, like a five lot street, that is called John Street, named after John Palmer, he passed away. But I heard that there could be some concerns with that being a dead end, like when we designed some of these, we don't like dead ends, because they have to be flushed in the next level. So there was talk about possibly bringing this line in to make a loop from the end of this street, the little five lot subdivision, into that, um, dead end, to loop that through, so we didn't know first of all, the board would be interested in that. We don't need any answers to that, this is just a form, because he wants to see where he needs to go, he needs to go to his, selling this house, or the family is interested in the area. But, had anybody ever discussed that, has anybody thought on that?
We've heard, we've heard of this, I didn't, uh, was actually aware that this was approved by the planning board.
It, well, the connection was to subdivision, but the subdivision was approved just in the, at the cul-de-sac, so that's how it was approved. But if the water department wants it connected, and we have to go, it's not probably going to his piece of property, but if the very end is a little triangle, the back down is a little house on John, we have to go through that, maybe secure an easement to go through that, once we go through that triangle, then we're back into the drainage lot, which is part of the subdivision, so that's town property, then we can connect to the hydrogen heads of the place. I just didn't know if that was something we should think about.
I think first we need to find out if it was approved by the planning board, I can, I don't.
They do, actually, it's not, I just. What wasn't approved by the planning board, I guess, because initially, it was probably approved in 2007, initially as, with an under, with an underground race. Then they changed their regulations to basics, it'll be basics in the underground, so then they re-approved, there's a new revision that can sell this and a new, I gotta talk to the planning board, but they, they didn't get the reintegration.
Do we have a copy of that on file?
I think it's old, probably from 2006, when we brought it off.
Do you initially?
And what, at that time, do you, do we have anything about our review was on the, for our, did they have that then?
I have that, I don't have the results, I'm gonna be with the, the things.
We probably have that, have we done this quite well? So how does this plan do the moratorium? Because you guys are willing, or we have a moratorium?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, um.
Is this now, just, just so I'm clear, is this, what you're asking for is to tie into or loop the system, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, the initiative for this subdivision, what we would have to do, we'd pick up some water main, and that coffee, um, Old Williams Street, that's a little bit of money terminated now. When I designed that, I brought it across the side street of Old Williams, it's on the same side as this property, and we ended it there with the hydrogen plug, with the valve. So then what the intention was to extend it, there's one homeowner, it was about 250 feet of project, between that subdivision and this subdivision. So the line would have to be extended from that street to this subdivision, which would give water service to the house, because right now it's one house on one large piece of property. And then from there, it turns into the cul-de-sac and north. And then it ends, the way it was all approved was to turn in there and then end at the hydrogen at the end of that cul-de-sac. And that would supply the five house lots in the rest of the subdivision. So.
So that's, I, that's six.
Well, six is the house, and houses are, the house is not Old Williams, which is existing, 1624.
That's dead?
Yeah, that's what they wanted to whip to, but they could take it down if they wanted to, some people like the character of it, some people don't, that's it. Something would prove the money to it.
Don't like that.
Yeah, it was, if it doesn't stay, it's probably gonna get slid over, because right now it's figuring the right side of the lot, which would be closer to where the roads will be, and so they're gonna choose to build a new office.
So, but if you did, then it would be in the subdivision, right?
No, it would still have, it's run the John, Old Williams.
Would the water service come off of Old Williams, or off of?
The water service would go off of Old Williams.
Without us, because it's old links?
Yeah, because the hydrogen.
Like the driveway would be on Old Williams?
Without us.
Yeah.
Yes. And it is.
And how many houses would it be, times?
Well, let's say six, right?
So six, oh, nine?
So for one, we need to see if, what the, if the planning board did approve this, if what was in our review from 2013 has been incorporated, I mean, that's, that's the first and foremost, because this was reviewed again, it wasn't from 2007, it was reviewed in 2013. So I'm not sure about revised plans from 2013, because what you had is from 2006.
I mean, just speaking from a personal preference, I would, especially if that did, that first one out, would make sense for us, I don't know.
So the first, the first initial in 2007, that expired?
It expired, we revised it, like it got approved with, with underground drainage system.
And that was in?
That was in 2007.
Okay, but then.
Then they, they changed the regulations to a lot of basis.
What that said.
Yeah, so then we resubmitted the plan, it didn't change the water, but it changed the drainage system.
And that was in 2013?
I believe so.
So it's been, so the projects have been sitting going since 2013?
Yep, and then we went to the board and, uh, last year, and they, we didn't change the plans, but they looked at it, they consulted, looked at everything. It still meets the same regulations that they had, so they re-approved it, and they gave us a one-year extension, which would be through, I think, October.
But they didn't notify the water. All right, so we need to make sure that the regulations are all incorporated in that planning board. For one, and then we just need to figure out how that plays into the moratorium.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can just solve that, but, uh, I don't think we talk.
I think there's really only, okay, just to get the style.
Right.
And if you want to, I probably have that, since it came to me, that I should have it in the office, we can call you, but you can send that to me, I'll make sure everything is in there, this is the first one.
You don't have a copy of the, um, planning board's decision, would you?
Oh, I don't have it, but they did sign it, to dial.
Same. Well, thank you, well, definitely, okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Nice, thanks, guys, thanks. Appreciate it.
Chuck, you're up, live in person, you're up.
I know, you guys, good, good fun, see you again. So it's a little of a grant, it took very, a lot of the grant, we had, I didn't know it was, was your reason, was, oh, yeah, a little, a lot. It was in 2013, I mean, it's a special limitation, so.
Ah, that's right, that's right, because with the planning board, or reapproving a plan in 2007, in 2020. Right, and how many projects have gone on since that day?
So there actually must be, because of 2007, they approved it, they lost, who was it now?
And obviously, they resubmitted something in 2013, one of the septic plans, they went from, they changed the regulations of the septic plans?
Yes.
Now that they changed in 2013. But I'm gonna guarantee, none of that, that I speak to you, I'll guarantee, none of that is in the planning board's review, none of it.
So 2007, 2013, they reapproved it last year.
Yeah, they must have reapproved it in 2012, and then they reapproved it again, that's in 19.
Same plan, probably.
Reproved, they reapproved it here, so really, they only have six months.
Oh, no, no, no. That's not my problem.
Exactly, I, I haven't even, uh.
No, that hundred and three houses that were planned on, that's adding six to that number, you say, yes?
A hundred and what?
A hundred and three houses that still approved right now for the town.
Hundred fifty one, two.
And now our hundred fifty two, that's another six on.
Hundred fifty two. Yeah, I think that would probably find it, that's probably, no, those are building permits, that, those are, a one fifty two is a big, already, residential permit. Yeah, those aren't valid. Oh. Right?
The, the one we took, the.
We have, on the books that we have.
That we have, yeah, they don't have obligations right now, a lot of that is on, on yourself.
Ninety?
But that's six, is that six added to that number, or is that included?
Yeah, I have those.
So, so, just, just, just not to, to keep Chuck here, the moratorium, is it, in, uh, give me a number, is it in, in planning approval from planning board, or, or building permit?
The moratorium will apply to new residential lots that are not on record with the registry of deeds as of date of this moratorium.
So what does that mean? Does your deed is a, a, a house getting married to?
New residential subdivisions and lots shown on approval, not required plans, that are recorded with the registry of deeds. So if someone owns a lot, or, and they can apply for a plowing, so it's not a subdivision, they can, because they're on, they own it, so they're ready to. But a new development can't command a five, three acres of land, that's my daughter.
Okay, so technically, they, they, we can't, we can't say no?
I think, I gotta check on that. Plus, he wants to buy an additional house, and he wants to tie in, that, that house can't be tied in, because it's part of the moratorium. This moratorium does not apply to lots that are shown on the system, planning is unrecorded with the registry of deeds, as of the effective date of. Yeah, so if someone has a seven lot subdivision that's approved at the registry, because they have to, once it's filed, it's filed with the registry. They're taxed with individual lots, but they have to have been filed with the registry of deeds.
Right, so, so say I, so say I go buy, uh, ten acres of land, but then I divvy it up and put six houses on there, I would have to tie in, it would, would make seven lots, right? Then I would have to tie in, how do you have to put wells?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's correct.
That's right. Correct.
They already own that property, that's not from the planning board, how many plans are still up that, that have been done? I mean, like, this is only six of the in Old World, how many more are actually out there in Old World?
I would say that Jim knows that.
It's not like it's 2006 to 2020, I don't know.
That should have expired, that, that's a big amount, so six? Yeah, it should have expired.
So the answer is yes, we want to loop, no matter what?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a no, right, so, well.
No question. The question is, can they give you a something? It might not even be worth it, because it's gonna cost them, frankly. But the problem is, they're not required to do those, because I don't think it says anywhere that.
That's a great one, that, that is a long road to be get.
Right.
That Lewis Street Loop is, that's, that's a great one.
Street go on, such a good, a lot of it down there, that was one of the best moves they had in one day, yeah. Okay, you're up, young man.
So, um, I don't, I know I'm actually dangerous, but if that's not moved in, and you haven't approved it yet, can you just say you haven't approved it yet, so you can't complete the service, no, you know, just a thought, anyway.
Just gotta figure out what we're, so.
Okay, um, so I just wanted to come through, and we made a lot of progress, uh, thanks to Jeff and Tina, but they help, uh, we're pretty much done with the water, the mass of plants, except for the rates, I'm still waiting for some additional information to do that, but we've set up the CIP. First, just to talk about, we're, we're completed the TSC one number one, uh, contest proposal, which has to be submitted to Mass DDP, and that's, uh, this one right here. So that required a sign off, but I, I just wanna try to take a look at people who submitted it to DDP, it seems, it's good, if they're gonna submit that. They have to approve it, it shouldn't be a problem, and actually, our, Emery, who was on the, um, the, um, the call last night, she. so that would clear a sign off of our, I just wanna try to take a look at people who submitted it to D E P, it seems, it's good, but they're not gonna submit that, they have to approve it, it shouldn't be a problem, and actually, our, Ingrid was on the, the, the call last night, she's been in communication with Michelle at their groundwater group and has already run the recommendations fine, and they think that it's good, the only concern that I do have is in talking about the water system master plan is that D E P has a right to not approve new sources if you're unaccountable water to over ten percent. So that's the only line there, it didn't have, come out of the groundwater group, it would come out of water management act. But like, they have the ability to not allow you to drink water without funding or new sources until you get your unaccountable water to ten percent, or at that time.
But where are we going?
Actually, you'd average over the last forty years at sixteen point nine percent of water. So.
Well, no matter, no matter what, that new well, that's gonna take time anyway, so we can still work on.
Yeah, absolutely, the only thing is, is that the, the approval for moving forward with it, which is the next step on this, you know, the groundwater exploration would be to get a massive approval, so if we want the process to move forward, and I'll, I'll get into a little bit more of the steps that have to be taken, but it's a good point, Derek, that it's gonna take a little over a year, like you probably won't have that well online until like next fall, it takes about a year for you to, so you don't want replacement. New sources is four to five years.
Yeah, that's fine.
So in that, you know, as we had talked the last time, we didn't get good results on the DS property, but that's a five-year process, I think that what we would recommend, because it would be, you know, probably twenty percent of the costs, is to look at C S three three, where Jeff has talked about potentially how to land it, we could put a source in there. But that being said, I don't know if you have any questions on that, and except, like I said, the project is pretty much completed, we just have to submit to D E P, and push that forward, and then hopefully we can keep that moving forward so that we have another. Well, there will be kind of four times that you get, you could get four times out of that new well, we'll get another C E O on that. Is that, I think, forty, forty gallons of that?
Yeah, roughly forty, forty, we'll come forward with it.
But we, we got good results there, so we can get over to more, so, not that we run it that way all the time, because it would be over, I think it's permit for one seventeen, one twenty, but in a summary, you could operate more, some averages for the year that we had about one, one point.
So as of this second, as far as C E O replacement, you're at the point where now we have to do more paperwork?
No, I mean, that could be the design, the design of the well. We, 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 part of that would be to sync the production well, we will contest to make sure that we have the full capacity there, but if that would be the production well, and then, you know, we connect it to the system with the, the design in the between, so that would happen the next year.
All right, so I lost you for a second, so right now, we have the approval from the D E P?
No, we have to submit it to them.
Okay, so you have to submit everything first?
So we're down on the, on the study side of things, we just have to submit it to them to get their approval, but the only thing that might be a hiccup is if they look at their unaccountable water and, you know, will that tax?
So they might even turn this down? I thought they were turning down new source, this is the replacement, we were talking about two different things a while ago.
Yeah, and no, that's right, okay, I misspoke, and I apologize.
All right, no, because I'm confused now, that's why I asked you.
No, you're right, and, and I misspoke, so that wouldn't probably be held up by that, by the new source.
Correct, and the, the new source, we'll worry about that.
Yep.
Because we need a little time, we, we need to straighten out, we, we need to straighten out two things right now, and the two things we need to straighten out is A, the replacement, and we need to straighten out the pipe between two and three. There's some major issues between, we need to get to the plant all the way.
Yep.
So Jeff knows, Greg knows, there's a problem between two and three, and I'm sure you're aware of it.
Yes, that, that's the next project we need to look at.
So in the meantime, we're getting more water to the plant, two and three needs to be straightened out, we need to work on this.
I agree.
I personally think that before we go even a step further, spending another dime, we need to have the well driller out there, and I want his opinion, that's gonna do the work.
On?
On the replacement well.
Yep, well, that would be the next step on that project, I think, but at the same time, we have to have the parallel with the evaluation of the pipe taking and the treatment plant, the raw water piping between two and three. And, well, there's three processes to do forward, that's C S three well number one, with the driller out there, the next point would be for the driller to be out there and, and taking the well and, and doing that work.
More so, more work than what we did before, we're only going down twenty feet or something, are we talking going down further than that?
No, I mean, the first was exploration, try and find it, and we found it, and now we put the production well, which would be a bigger, about eighteen by twenty-four.
See, but I thought we found it, and it wasn't a loss of?
No, that was that?
That was at the DS property.
That was at the DS?
Oh, right.
So the C E O well number one, the replacement is about twenty-five feet north of where the existing well is.
Correct.
And it's in the good soils, it's, that wasn't mined, and it's before the, kind of like, so it's before the rock decreased that. So that area is really good, and you can get a good well there, pull two and get off of that, so we get, and has to be D E P. So you're absolutely right, we gotta pursue that with the driller at the same time, the other issue that you talked about, not only getting the waters to master plan, we have produced two task orders. One is the optimization of the plant, because not only on the raw water side, but trying to make it more efficient so you get the water out, but it's just not operating the way that was intended, and, so, but to get the water out of two and three and having it sitting together, they're fighting against each other.
Correct.
Which you, was what you talked about, that hydraulic situation, we have to look at that and see what the problem is there. I think one of the things is that two is funnel through the building, and we should do next down with the, with the side on main and everything, I think that we just might have to use some man who can stare against the water up there. And what's happening with the well is when they all go one together, especially in the summertime, they're backing off on the curves and just not getting flows out of there. And as part of that study as well, we'll look at, if you guys are gonna take this off. It's, as part of that study, we're gonna look at having all the wells work together as one, so that we can have them operating at their optimum point on curve, which would be more flow coming out of there. Now, you still have concerns about during the summer with the, the dry season, and you're gonna have to look at optimizing the plant, which, which Jeff has done a good job in, in fine tuning that, so that it's producing more water, and I think that the best thing that you guys did was to put on, stop the outside water, because it's really helped to dampen most peaks, because it was getting out of control there. So that next study, the, the task order that's at the back of, of this room right here, is the optimization of the raw water side and the finished water side, and that's, you know, hopefully it provides you with some recommendations on optimizing both of those, the raw water and the finished water, so you can get more raw water to the plant and more water out of the plant more efficiently.
Does it seem, is it, it's not simple to say, but is it? I mean, the plant's been going up for sixteen years now, fifteen, sixteen years, and it's just never done what it was intended to do. And now, we have two filters that are at the end of their life, one totally misplaced, renewed. It just never really did what it was told, yeah, so no matter what we get for water in this town, we just can't get it out.
Yeah, and I think that that's, I see what you're getting at, and
Okay, I know that's quite a lot of well, but if I would have admitted.
I can't hear you.
So, not to change subjects a little bit, but we kind of, for the next year or a year and a half, and I know we have to, we still have a lot of stuff to look at as far as the whole. If we fix some minor things, not minor, but maybe if we straighten out a few things to make it more efficient, obviously, we just have to go that route. That's all, that's, I mean, not a million of dollars, but I'm saying, because we have to get three, four, if we pick three fixes, short, well, they'll be long term, but getting them fixed fairly soon.
Yep. And it's inside of our money on the rates that you're gonna have to increase, so. The, the three things that we would recommend that you do, actually, the first, low hanging fruit would be the best one, would be the water rod, because you have six percent of your water that's unaccountable, it's actually gonna score against you, by, actually, by twenty seventeen, you're supposed to have, by your registration for water management act with D E P, you're supposed to have your unaccountable pool water down to ten percent. So a water rod, it's twenty thousand dollars, and matched up with the leak detection study, which, to get exactly what the price was there, for about eleven thousand dollars, we'll look at defining what those sources of unaccountable water are, and, you know, potentially, especially for whatever reason, you have a leak in the system that's happened, if you repair that leak, then you get, you know, thirteen percent. So that would be, it's the second task order here, but it would probably be the low hanging fruit for the littlest amount of money, they could probably give it to you at the benefit of your buck, because if you can reduce at all towards ten percent, first of all, the D E P would be really happy about that for future improvements and S R F funding, and, you know, obviously, you have no water, that water wouldn't be lost, it would be in one of your customers.
Not that disagree with you, Chuck, you know me, I can get a little nasty sometimes.
No, that's okay.
But again, this can't turn into, like, we can't say, okay, I want this done in three months, and it turned into nine months or twelve months or two years, I mean, this project alone turned into a lot longer than we thought, it was still not done yet. Everything you're saying is great, but I still can't raise the rates.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I need, I'm way too, this is kind of like, still stalled until I can say to, all right, we'll raise the rates.
Yeah.
I, I better get the money in to spend the money to try to straighten out the rest of the stuff.
No, it's a risk rate, and you gotta play, play, that's, that's the line, too.
Right, and that's, that's the start, I know this is a great start, I guess.
Yeah, we have that now, I, I guess, and, and that'll be done at the end of this month, but the next time, you know, you meet, the, the rates, we'll have that done, which is waiting on a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's fine.
And, and I, and I, and I, I understand that you're aggravated about our state on that song.
Well, no, it's not just, it's not you, Chuck, I mean, I understand it's the whole, I mean, I can't say it's your whole company, but a lot of people have dropped the ball, and it's not you dropping it, because obviously, you've known about it for a while.
Yeah.
Yes, there are, this is gonna be done in what, Ju- January? When, when did you come on board with us?
Well, it, it, it was supposed to be a six-month project, I think I said January, but we started in, in, in August, I think, it was probably February, but I did report that to you, and that, that, that was in the fall, and that, that, that's on me, and ultimately, as I told Jeff before, as the representative of the, the project manager for the firm, that, that's not my responsibility, so I apologize for that, that should've been done more quickly, and I can give you a lot of excuses, but
No, 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 it's not, I totally understand, it's, it's a big picture here, there's a lot going on, it's not like, we can't make any decisions until we get all the information that we need to do that, and that's the biggest thing, and we're not such a good situation here, like this water department, and not, you know, everyone else, the employees are fine every time, it's infrastructure and, and rates and, and all that, and we really need to make some decisions sooner rather than later, for us to start getting, exponentially worse.
I, I don't know where we stand, because I know that the last time we talked about looking at what it billed funds, they were for these two studies, I mean, the water rod, like I said, with the leak detection, would be about thirty thousand, that would be, it would be good if you could move forward that right away, because like I said, that would solve some of your problems if we find where that unaccountable water, if we cut that in half, that's more water we can go to the customers.
Being dear, we should have done, we should have started that last year.
Yeah, that's how Brock found that they had enough water after they spent millions of dollars on the resale location plan.
Yeah, and that's why we wanna do it upfront, because what that, what will happen there is that if you find water, that will delay improvement, and we'll save you money. So it's, it's short money for, with a big bank group up, and so, especially when you see unaccountable water in any system, and as much as I know a lot of water suppliers are upset with D E P for putting restrictions under Water Management Act, by doing so, it makes you look at your unaccountable water and get it down as low as you can, so as much as you wanna salvage water as you can, so you can get that revenue generated, they're kind of screws to everybody by saying, if you don't add by ten percent, then we're gonna take stuff away from you until you do it.
If we do this leak detection survey, what, I mean, how accurate is it, how, how much can we expect, I mean, to reduce our, our waste, what if we do this system detection leak and we don't find anything, we spend twenty thousand dollars, don't find anything, and we have, you know, we're still losing whatever
Bad record.
I, well, that's, that, that could be it as well, it could be bad record keeping, it could be under registering meters, and then you can, you're, I know that you're slowly changing out your meters, the biggest thing I think would be helpful to look at would be, and I know Jeff calibrates the source meters every year, but if you look at your yard large users, you have some old meters there, and if they're under registering by just a little bit, you can, you know, capture that and build them more, and you get more revenue, I mean, Stoughton hadn't done
a water rod or, or anything and looked at it, we went and tested like five of their large user meters, and, and they gained in revenue by like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars or something like that, it was crazy money, so that'll generate revenue that can help you to, to do more improvements.
We don't have that many significantly large users, right, the Aggie school. Not how, how, that's a whole
Well, we have some old meters up there, right?
I, I, I'll bet you, I'll bet you the Aggie school, I'll bet you, I'll bet you, we, we, we can see what that happens, yeah, when they put that whole system in, I will guarantee you that'll change that whole dynamic of everything.
And record keeping is not continuous, and it's more of it, we flush, and, yeah, that's all accounted with that, every time, I mean, we're supposed to have a property, we all have a protocol and, or of even of a special height.
Yeah, and that's also just optimize that future.
This is not the, it's not a new, this is not a new issue to the district, it's been going on for a long time, I mean, even Chuck has said, we, we struggle with the loss of, where is that, what percentage of, of lost water, and measuring that is very difficult, too, that the state really doesn't take into account, when they make the determination of what percentage it needs to be, they do a terrible job of, of giving guidance on that maybe, so.
The other thing about the first study, which is the optimization of the raw water side, Derek, I mean, you mentioned that, it's a, it's a good point, I mean, if we can figure out the hydraulics there and get more water to the plant, you know, that would be a big step, and, and Jeff and, and Greg had, had mentioned that a lot of that work could potentially be done in a house, on the off scene.
Not offered. Yeah, I agree with that, I mean, there is definitely, there is an issue with the pipe and there, it definitely has an effect on the public curves, no question.
Yeah.
No question, it's just, we still have the wells that we have.
Yeah.
And they're not it's just not, they're, they're very shallow, low producing wells, not big things for that, so it's, it'll help, but then we don't have to, still get it out of the plant.
Yeah, and I think that, I think when, and I, and I know you, you guys just got this today, I got, I got it to Jeff a little bit early, but the section five and six, it lays out the, the projects, and you can take a look for it, and the other thing that we, we talked about is that works, works pretty well, and if there's any way that you can be the least or purchase that from C pump, if you need more water, I mean, I think the main focus someone said, excuse me. The main focus on that, on the capital improvement program for the first phase is to look at producing more water, getting more water to, you know, your customers because of concerns that we have.
Yeah, there's definitely two ways to look at it, if we have, if we can find an external
Yeah, there's definitely two ways to look at it. If we have, if we can find an external source outside of that plant, then we don't have to focus on the plant as much, we can kind of work the water for a while, that's what that is to do, as long as we have it. An outside source from the plant.
Right.
For transit, that's, that's, to gain a source and bring it to the plant, there you are building the plant.
Yeah, I know, and, and I, I understand that, and I, I sympathize with a plant operating with the shirt, but in order to build a new plant, that's gonna cost a lot of money, so, I mean, I think, as you had mentioned, Derek, you're gonna have to kind of do these interim phases.
Yeah, there's gotta be three, four interim, and then honestly, I think we're gonna have to just look at maybe changing the title of filter plant, you know, we're not really building a plant, that's never gonna happen.
Right.
You know, if we can optimize it or change the zine on filter water, find out where we're gonna have to.
Yeah.
You know, and that's the one thing that, you know, talking to prior employees here over the years, you know, I'm totally a hundred percent about the seed one replacement.
Yeah.
But they've done that before and it hasn't worked, and I want to do again. We're on seed number one, replacement number three.
Yeah.
So, we're running on two now, and it's not, you know what I mean, there's no, there's no reason why in the last thirty years, we're on three wells, so I want to make sure that this last one that we do.
Yeah.
You had mentioned the twenty-four inch case, and I talked to Walter, and he said, I go up on a thirty-six inch case.
Yeah, well, that's not, that's not fine design.
Right, no, no, I'm right, I'm just talking just as, white hair, listen, and, I mean, again, I don't want to keep doing this over and over and over and over.
Yeah, well, I do, you know, wells break down just because of, you know, you're gonna replace wells over time, I don't know, you know, you might be able to stretch it out if you do more redevelopment, and I don't know what the maintenance was back when we had our models first installed, and so if, if it's, if you continue the maintenance on it, but you're gonna, your specific pathway is gonna go down over time no matter what because of fines and, you know, iron magnings build up and follow, so, but I, I'm, I'm on board with you, what you want to do is you want to, you know, extend the life of the well as much as possible, and that happens through, you know, the maintenance that maybe didn't happen in the first two, so, I'm not saying that that's just the case, maybe it's just nature of that, it might be that, the water quality in there here. You know, I know that the seed treat is better, but, you know, you still got iron magnings or issues with milligrams and everything, I think, so, that's a concern. And as much as, you know, you'd like to have a new plant tomorrow, that's just not gonna happen. So, that, the first task order is the optimization of the raw water and treatment plant, we would look at potential replacements of processes if, if there is a better option, and that's what we would do in that study to look at, whether that would be viable or at least cost out what you need to improve what you have.
We go all in with the overall master plan, major work. And then whatever I have in front of me here. What's my, what's, what am I got? That was just for, that's just for this right here, for this pipe I'm gonna make here. That's a hundred and seventeen thousand, right, and then I have another, another nineteen grand, so that's a hundred and forty, give or take, a hundred and thirty-seven. And what do we spend to date on the master plan? What's the overall master plan costing?
Thirty-seven, seven for the master plan.
So, I've spent, give or take, a hundred and ninety grand on, to be told that we have an issue account, basically. Seems like a whole lot, right?
And so, before, my recommendation is, before we spend anything additional, I want to have a dime for the water.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Not another dime, not another dime until, and, and I know it may delay us from doing some things, but we gotta understand the rate study, we gotta understand where everything's at before, you know, in the overall scheme of things, a hundred thousand bucks, we, you know, we can figure that out, but overall, what we have to do, Main Street project, the upgrades to the treatment plant, you're talking a bond that's gonna be as large as what we paid for the treatment plant before we're all said and done, so, we need to understand that portion of it first before we start taking on any more additional.
No, I, I didn't mention that, I think that we, we wanted to get, I, I met with Jeff last week to find out what additional projects that we may have missed or haven't had him review it, and the Main Street project came up, but we didn't have that, and it should've been in there, and it had to be today, so we included that, and that's what, going along and gets you guys to this, but that, the, the improvements are laid out, and we're just waiting to get some additional information from Jeff and Tina to do the rate study, and then we're done, as soon as we get that, within a week, so, so.
Does it make sense to do the leak detections, confirm it?
Uh, we, we don't have anything budget, I agree, leak detection is very important, I mean.
Well, the leak detection, leak detection would be, just that you would contract with somebody else, you could help Jeff to set that, I think it's eleven thousand, and then the water rod would be eighteen nine.
It'll be a one thousand for you, and then plus.
Uh, it's eleven. Let me just double check the number, is there?
So, when will, 'cause I know what's on here is nothing, first of all, the agricultural school, when will all of that installation be done, of what they're doing as far as water?
It's gone, like, the meter is in all of that, so, the first phase is almost complete, that is basically the builder and all side, and all of, Sunset, yeah, Sunset Street.
You'll do all. So, have we turned up the O K?
Yeah, but I can, I can help Jeff with that, this operation would have to do with eighteen nine, and that would be a projection.
All lines of detection, all lines. As a temporary, so.
Company.
Some of that.
Yeah. That was two.
No, that's gonna be the big one, because I think that's probably a huge part of our loss comes from, is, is something that.
This one, yeah. But are they saying on six hundred, is it worth paying somebody to go in and test the meter, no?
That, uh.
You mean to say that, if we're losing massive amount of water?
No, I, I have a, I have a pretty good, so, once they're done, let's say it's a month, what's that, temper is off, the only thing there that will be unmetered per se should be built at all, and that's the one that, you know, once they meet the temper, we don't have to really trade any of the, I'm gonna work, but we're gonna figure out something, you know, you have to figure something out here, because it's not, it's gonna make it be connected to an existing six inch, six inch line that doesn't have a meter.
Right.
Kids are at school, looks like. We got, we got to figure something out with temper here, something in there, but the other, the other buildings I have, we're gonna be working with more than the employers to put meters in, like, there's a meter in Houston already, there's actually a couple meters around anyway.
So, who should be able to, if that's the figure?
Before, yeah, the next year, they're gonna be doing it by the dairy barn, so that will be all brand new, everything will be metered up there, all the new buildings, obviously, but they, I'm not gonna shut it off until they put my meters in, the only problem is the water, right now, that is the only, the obstacle where it's a six inch line, it's gotta be a pain in the neck, but.
Doesn't it come with the building six inch?
Yeah.
The Aggie has six inch meter, or what?
It's two of them, so.
I can give you two inch, you know, it's easy, you don't have to six inch meter, that would be crazy, that'd be, no, no way, we'd get, but.
We'll talk about that about.
Yeah, yeah. That's gonna be a workout, right?
Yeah, all right, all right, all right. With all, at this point, I think we can take Chuck's stuff under advisement, get some more information that, on what we need on I R A, so, I might have missed it when I, when I stepped up on phone, but what is the update on when will we see, or you projecting when we see the, or at least the draft of the master plan?
It'll be next meeting, assuming that I get all the information we need to do the rate study, which, which should, within a week. And the, the rate study will take like about a week or so, I'm, I'm gonna try and get it to Jeff, like, you know, like, like a week before or next week, and then we can forward along to you, I mean, and I want to emphasize too, when, when you look at master plan and you want to look from the source out, what we did with the, the model was the distribution system overall in a big picture view, and now we're going in to look, you know, at some of the deficiencies during the raw water and finished water system, and we'll have a better understanding exactly what has to be done, and so. Thirty-seven, seven for our water system master plan, have a big picture view, give you a twenty-year program to, of what you have to do, and now, we'll dive into moving from the source out to the piping, to storage, and footings, and so, and I know that if, if you guys have any questions on this, over the next couple of weeks, by the next day or four, you know, we'll have the master plan final.
I think the one thing I need would like to impress upon Chuck, you, is, you know, honestly, we might not get to all of this, you know, some of it is cognitive, you need looping, I know.
Yeah, that's the last phase of that stuff, sure.
But the, the sheer number is almost, we're gonna have to find ways to get rid of that grant, there's no way it's all extended by with just, there's no way. Twenty-seven million dollars.
Zero. And I think the other thing too is just so you know, we've, we've done a lot of these on the master plan, it's overall, it's not short, as far as comparing it to the linear footage inside of the system facilities, it's aligned with some of the hopes that we've done, because, you know, we've done in Easton, and as you know, we've done in Stoughton, Plymouth, which was obviously massive, but a lot more, and, and a lot of the, the systems are in the same boat with, that you are, not, not.
The problem we have is, we are a town of seven thousand, and twenty percent of, fifteen percent of the.
County service.
Yeah, but the other, twenty percent of the time gets serviced by a whole nother system, so, we're not, when those guys could absorb it as part of that, we can't, we can't, and we, that's why, you know, and no business, in, in, and you, Will here, when she sits down with us, and sits down with us, Sunset, Swansea, and whoever else, that, that really pushes for a regional water system, because in order to spend the money and do upgrades in all the communities, it's gonna have to be some kind of regional, where we go and get some state money to do it, and they won't, I know Mallor brought it up, no ask Pat to see if she'll help with Main Street, if it was Main Street and Elm Street running into Swansea, yeah, maybe we could, we, they'd give us some money because it's more than one community, they're, they're much more willing on regional basis, but.
As soon as.
Grace water.
And Grace water.
So, so it's, 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 it's very difficult, I mean, we, we struggle, you know, we're hoping that we, we have, what, seven years left on the note now? Then, no, it's a little less.
Two thousand, twenty-five.
So, five years left on the note now, you know, and that note was only ten million, so, how many million is that?
Oh, seven.
Seven million, and that's four hundred, something, five hundred thousand basically, left, yeah, so, you, you know, you're talking, if we do this, granted, it'd be a little longer, you know, to do it, but you're talking twenty-seven million dollars, you're talking three times what our budget is now, we, you know, we only have a budget of two point four, two point five million itself, and you're talking yearly payments, you're, you're doubling the rates, doubling the debt, that's assuming you're.
Right, right.
All right, well, thanks, if you have any questions, this is what keeps me up.
I just want you to follow, I just want you to follow the report being done, that's all.
Yeah, and the next one, but the one question I have is that we're gonna have to figure out to, you know, how you have to tax, and that's just for the plant, though, right?
Well, no, it's based on, it's a split, it's a, yeah, it's an arbitrage basically, it's actually.
I'm gonna have to talk to you about that, so it's gonna look better, because I don't know how that's gonna meld into the rates, like normally, you just look at your water rates to be able to increase.
What's not split now, fifty-fifty?
Yeah, just on.
Yeah, fifty-fifty, fifty percent of our operating budget comes with tax, and fifty percent comes over to you.
Okay, so I'm gonna have to figure out, like, with these improvements, you know, get that information from you and see, I don't know, will the, the tax increase with these improvements, or is that just for the plant? The tax base, or however money you get from the ta, much money you get from the tax for your operating budget, is that to pay down the plant, or is it?
Always been that way, they've always had a tax.
Okay.
It was just what the split was gonna be back when they built the treatment plant, how it.
Uh, okay, so, I'm gonna have to get some.
What's the show?
Definition of that from you, so that we'll know how to carry that into the rate study, so, I'll look at this key information that I asked you for, but I'm gonna have to look for a description of that, the breakdown of the, the tax and the rates.
All right, okay. One last.
Yep.
Hydraulic model.
Yep.
How does this all work as far as, that's part of the master plan?
Yes, yeah.
When you come with us as far as hydraulic model, which way flows are going, will plant running, not running, how do we, is that something that you give us so we can put on a computer and?
We give you the, the model, the actual hydraulic model, the software that the district would have to buy, it's written into our contract that you would get the model from us.
Okay.
So, that's, we'll, we'll put, give it to you on the contract, so that's what.
So, the model is pumping and non-pumping, two separate scenarios, since that's what we do, correct?
Well, we, we calibrated the model for a static situation, but then it, it includes pumping, when the pump pumps on, you know, cycle's on, if you have an extended period simulation, you would operate your well and, and, or your treatment plant, excuse me, into the system whenever you do that, so I guess I don't really understand the question, we're gonna provide you with the model.
Well, the model is where the flow's at, correct?
Under certain situations, there's different model simulations for average day, max day, peak hour, extended period simulation, fire protection, so.
Right, and at six o'clock, we shut the switch off, the whole town changes.
You're, you're flowing from Kenix.
Right, that'll be the other scenario apart of the model, so you have to give me two different scenarios, correct?
Well, it, I guess it depends from what condition you're looking at, because there's a lot of different conditions in that if you're running an average day, if you're running in the summer on, on a max day, if you're running peak hours, so there's a lot of different simulations.
And all those are part of the model.
There are different simulations that are built into the model that do that.
And then once we get the model, then we have to buy the software from you.
No, that's why, because we buy it from the vendor.
Okay.
We, we can't say the model, you would have to go through that Ventis software, but.
So, once we get the thumb drive from you, it's useless for us, because we can't have to do it?
You have to get the software from.
So, then we have to go to the vendor and buy the software from them?
Yeah. I, I, I could get that number for you, I could get you in contact with the Ventis software, see, what we do is we, we purchase site licenses for it, and we have, I think we have three in the office, so if we have multiple projects going on, we could check out the, the software on our, our server, it, the only thing that I didn't, I guess I'll have a question for you then, what, what's the intent of, like, somebody's gonna have to be trained to do it, and I, so that that would have happened through the Ventis software people, how they, they do it?
Well, so you give this hydraulic model for us, but now we have to implement hydro flushing and all these other projects, how does Jeff set up a hydro flushing plant, we have to go to you again and say, okay, now we wanna go hydro flushing plant, it's another thirty grand, we wanna change the main on Main Street, okay, Chuck, so there's another twenty grand, so every time we go fire, we have to go to you and spend tens of thousands of dollars, when we can't even look at the model ourselves, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, no, you're gonna, the model is yours, the model is yours, so you, you would just need to have somebody trained to use it.
Because I mean, this is, as far as employees are concerned, we have knowledgeable employees who, like Jeff.
Sure.
They should be able to play around with this, and, I mean, obviously, you need an expert, oh, with an engineer, but there's, he can set up a whole flushing program if he.
We just have to buy the software, correct?
Yeah, you have to buy the software and then somebody trained to use it, even a directional, which is a component of the, the. Yeah, you have to buy the software and then have somebody trained to use it, even a directional, uh, which is a component of the, the model that we have purchased as well. So, so yeah, I think that you're gonna have a.
Well, because the last, I had heard from a former employee, he did this ten years ago, twenty years ago, and we had the disk and it's useless.
Yeah.
So why did we just do all this, which I know that that's, yeah, they gave us, like you said, on a thumb drive, and it wasn't thrown to the trash because we can't use it. So they spent all that money.
But I also have another situation.
Well, we defined with the software or something or whatever it was.
Yeah, some ten users, so they spent tens of thousands of dollars years ago and we left the disk. And then another engineering firm took half our prints and then gave them back, they're bought out, and they lost all the emails. So I mean, there's, there's been prior stuff happening way before you and everybody here, but try not, again, not to get to that point because they did have our models, but you can't use it.
So, yeah, we can put you in contact with the, the Ventis software people, that you can talk to them about purchasing the software and then, um, and then get the training for it with.
But if it's a hundred thousand dollars for software, that's a year, isn't it?
I, I, I don't know what it is, but I, I can, you know, they can quote you the price. But yeah, if, if you wanna utilize the, the model we provided for you, you'd have to get the software from the Ventis.
But you find it's a lot of additional, it has additional licenses available that I can use and see if you think.
Well, I just, again, they wanted, what we just, they did, I mean, I can find out what year it was, it was regardless, and we have a disk in this.
Yeah, I don't know what happened with that. So yeah, as soon as, um, I mean, the model's calibrated now, we made all the runs and obviously made the recommendations, so I can provide that on the master plan. And then we're in the contact, so. Okay.
Thanks, Chuck.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have to lean at six.
We will be down.
Because I have to. I'm not trying to cut it short or anything, but I just had some issues.
So, uh, next is to approve the minutes of the June night, nothing, June eighteen, Maritime, June eighteen, January, June twenty-fifth emergency water bed and June twenty-fifth emergency water bed. So we'll approve the minutes in the.
So move second.
On discussion, and, uh, table, all the policy, I have it, far squad. Here, Chuck? Any other questions?
Nope.
Nope. Financial community. We closed out, uh, FY twenty at a hundred and one point five percent in, uh, income, uh, which was thirty, we brought in thirty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars for. What's that? End of year.
We've got it.
That's all, good. Yeah, we brought in thirty-three thousand one hundred and one. Sorry.
Yes.
Okay. We brought in thirty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents overall we budgeted. Our expenses, we spent, um, for eighty-seven point eight percent, we spent three hundred, we spent three hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-three forty-seven under what we had budgeted, controlling expenses. Our receivables were sixty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-one, fifty-five thousand fifty-one cents with twenty-eight thousand six hundred and eleven eighty-two in net worth. For a, for a, twenty thousand six hundred and fifty-five thirty, that's because the bill is just not right. Can you, uh, can you see? The level will change a little bit. So is there motion to accept the, uh, project report?
Second.
Accepting here now, um, table, all the policy I have, is there motion to approve the warrant and submit it by, I think they should pick up. And, um, table, all the policy I have, they only have some transfers, end of year transfers. There is a request to transfer two thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and forty-three cents from R and M water meters to electricity. Request for the transfer of the rate increase to electricity. Motion to transfer nine hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-three cents from R and M water meters to new equipment purchase, some landscaping equipment. Eight dollars and thirty-eight cents from R and M water meter service to DDP assessment. A hundred and forty-three dollars and ten cents from R and M water meter service to R and M treatment maintenance. And fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and four cents from R and M water meter service to R and M system maintenance.
So move.
So second.
Second.
On discussion. Um, table, all the policy I have, I have it. For potential for this to superhead this report.
Oh, wait, did you do any judgments?
Oh, sorry. That's another thing. Is there a motion to, in total, a total of ninety-eight thousand thirty-five dollars broken down as follows? Twelve hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents in the meter program, thirty-five hundred and sixty dollars in land purchase, seventy-one, seventy, eighty in hydro replacement, forty-five hundred and fifteen dollars roofing, roof siding and windows out of the ten. Fifty-nine hundred twenty dollars and twenty cents from Article twelve of the master plan, thirty-five hundred dollars for all the third-toothed doll exercise tonne. Twenty thousand dollars from Article two of the meter program, ten thousand dollars out of the ten to chew work, ten thousand one hundred from Article eleven to generate electric, twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents from Article three ground wire exploration, and ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and forty-one cents for the tangent pipe project. So is that still piping up the bike for that project?
No, everything, I don't know, paid for, it takes a minute to build yet, but.
So that's why we're coming, that's why we're here, is it?
It's all about.
Is there motion to approve the, approve the upwired twenty and twenty? So move.
Stay there.
On the table, on the table. Superhead this report. So it's just something I want to impress upon you guys and the residents about the condition of our wells right now and how much water we've upfished. And the reason why we had to come back to conclusion that we need to initiate a water ban and a day more. Year-to-date, as of June, we have pumped, pumped about two million gallons more, which is basically what we pumped in February. All the way there. So that was our year-to-date, uh, we pumped a hundred million, blew over a hundred million, and we pumped, uh, we pumped eighty-nine million, um, a year prior. Since the morris already, it's, it's slowed down, I forget the time where it kicks off and, you know, we know people are still here, we wish they wouldn't, but. Since the, uh, this July, we've approximately one, one point eight, one point six million less than we did the prior July. It's helping, uh, it's helping on, on the plants, but our well levels, you know, to, to go along with. It, it seems like everybody's getting rain. We are, we're not getting it. And everybody thinks, you get money in the storm, but it is not, we're not recovering. Last year, our, you know, see, last year, our well levels were much better than where we are right now. Cedar one, which must go down a bit, it's only down a point seven feet, but Cedar two is down one point five feet compared to last year. Cedar three, the vacuum's down one point six feet, that's a lot for Cedar three. Walker one is down a foot and a half from last year, and Walker two is down one point one feet.
So one point one feet or one point five feet doesn't seem like a lot to.
No.
The normal person, but it, I mean, it obviously is a lot.
So, yeah, like last year, we did have some rain, it's July, we got rain. And, um, by September, by September, our well conditions were a little horrible, couldn't flush. So that's why we slow things down. Hopefully, we can bounce back, maybe we can get some rain, or at least we can hold the line going forward. But these are the conditions that we have, they're not great, you know, that's why we need to slow the plant down. The plant is not like to pump nine hundred thousand gallons a day every day, but the muscle, so, you know, well, conditions aren't great. So we're out there, and everyone guesses, we have to go out there and check. We did, we did find, find nineteen people on this morning. Here it is.
Really?
Yeah. So, um, this is, this is a, uh, it's not a joke. This is happening, and we need to have these wells for a long, long term.
So, um, my neighbor, two houses down, I, I talked to them, they had this problem a couple days ago. I had talked to them, she had actually was coming out of the driveway, which is perfect, I got a chance to talk to her. And she knew nothing about it, man. And I think, my opinion, us not sending out notices to everybody, even though it would cost two or three thousand dollars, kind of short sight on, for our part. Now, could she have been, you know, saying she didn't see it on social media or not seeing the sign, et cetera, et cetera, possibly? Especially with, you know, with water wells going out, uh, kind of disappointing that we did send a notice without it. Do you think it still makes sense, uh, to send notices out now this time? We foresee, what I'm saying is, do we foresee this pan continuing for the rest of the summer into the fall slash winter?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, unless we get two, three, three weeks of solid rain.
Which I, I don't know.
Rest is.
It's, it's only working, so.
I love it, it was so bad last year, we were, it was, it was rough. Cedar three's tripped out about five, six, seven. We're trying to slow that down.
And I know, I know if you catch people, you know, if they get a written warning, but obviously, you know, so many people, I mean, I've given you three or four or five, whatever it is. And I get people catching me all the time, you know, so maybe I'd give you five and, you know, whatever, we send out maybe twenty-five notices.
We're sending probably seven, you're right.
So what is it, I'll just tell you.
Oh, yeah, since this on even and all that altogether, I'd say.
I, I still think it behooves us, um, to send out, honestly, send out those. I think it costs us two thousand dollars, it costs us two thousand dollars, we, it's not that we don't have enough money for it.
We did send out the CCR, the IUD.
We sent the IUD, the CCR.
The CCR there was a lot.
We didn't send it, yeah.
What's the CCR?
The state report, the annual report.
And that was the blue letter, I suppose.
The IUD.
Yeah, that, that's all, yeah, that's all. But so how much is it to go mail it out if we, I mean, what's it cost us to do those, when it's nineteen-hundred-ish people? And.
Yeah, so size of the store, postage, and then.
Whatever it costs, uh. So maybe people haven't talked to you, no?
I think it's, honestly, it's a little brand now, but we should have done.
We have, we have money, we can do that.
Right now, yeah, we just have to.
Yeah.
Add to the one.
So you wanna create something, make motion that, that, that we request that a mailing law? And put some good verbiage down, explain the situation that we're in, and that the expectation is we'll have an update after September first.
Yeah, I think September is a good time to update.
Yeah, obviously.
Yeah, check our website, check the town website, if we can link to the town website.
I mean, I don't see the conditions shaking.
No, I don't either.
I, I would expect the message wide.
Yeah, it's a dry, it's a dry summer right now.
I mean, my, my hope is that, you know, we can get to September and say, yeah, we're, we're better all before October, so. What people forget is not only do we have a dry summer, windows small open to really.
Right.
So it's not a lot, but don't get your own, we had rain in the spring now.
And when people, people are home, that's good for the whole.
Yeah, yeah, but that's not gonna change for a while.
So I, I would, let's put some verbiage, if you want us to proofread it before we send it out, let us know, we'll make it, you know, we use twelve million dollars here or develop a bad shape, whatever. Just a paragraph, it doesn't really matter, it's just a paragraph.
Sure, what's that one?
They just want.
Like a postcard?
House, house, whatever's, honestly, a letter or whatever's cheapest, you can do it on postcard.
Yeah, I'd say a postcard.
Yeah, because you might.
Right, if it's a letter, you'll have to open it, they'll, they'll see it, but if it's a postcard, they'll flip it over and take it and go.
Yeah.
So if our motion requests that this work ended, uh, transfer, send out an updated postcard, would the information be reality? Biggest thing in future life.
So move second.
On discussion, here, now, the table, all the policy I have. So that was basically my run, like, we're not in a bad shape, I don't. Yes, a lot of crystal county is getting rain, we got it.
At a pro, we got three and a half inches of rain in the other day.
Good trouble.
Yeah, we, actually, the other day, literally, we got like a quarter inch.
I got, like, you, even the little bit you've got, you have, you have nothing.
We got nothing.
So. It is, it is, that's, that's where we're at. We're all together probably, Chuck, so. Uh, I talked to Andy, we talked the signs, uh, and we got an explosive sign.
Oh, yeah.
He's working something out now for, um, that's outside, well, it's obviously. Or now, distribution is kind of a little.
Right.
Hey, I told him he was gonna drive by and he texted me later, he's like, I drove by. You can't see it. That was it, uh, we need to set up a meeting, if anyone here is available, when you're, you need to let them know when you're available, office and dates. Summer stretch water, um, you might be with us?
Can we have Swansea there to say, yeah?
Could, but we might be talking about, it might end up going that way, I don't know. Swansea is not talking to them right now as far as.
Did they talk to the council?
They told them to go present. So my question is, do we want representative Hattler to meet you on the exam, would you?
Very much so.
Okay, okay. So why don't we get some dates from her, why don't you draw a couple of dates, we'll send her, see which one she's available for.
She would.
I know she would.
Right.
I will make myself available, sure, I can travel to work.
When you sit in our office.
In the office, I will be around, I mean. But come back, I, I don't care. There you go.
Hey, that's about it. Whole business, I think we talked about, you know, I didn't want to add to this with honey, I hear?
No, there, it's, it's, it's a project, I don't know, right? I just, I don't know. They broke it too long, I know, but everything works.
They are gonna be open, but.
I have, I have continued, I've joked with them.
Oh, I, I.
It went from, oh, we're gonna keep this little specialist food.
Yeah, you're right.
We gave it all.
Um, they, uh, they just said, I can't, uh, we gotta, we want kids not to go to that school, but it's gonna cost the town, every time a student goes over there.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, people, the, the towns that are sending students over, they don't understand what that bond grant was gonna be every year. So. So credit card came on hand, we need to discuss that.
Yeah, wow, that's close.
New business, the Somerset inter municipal agreement, you know, talking up here, I think, is that an email?
Oh, yeah, that was the temporary connection, which I asked, we asked them to write something up just so it was in paper.
Or I mean, using it, but.
Yeah. You should have signed it.
We have, we should, we need it, we need it, yeah.
You know, I mean, yeah, motion to accept this Somerset water agreement and specify.
Before I said, did you have to get you to, did you want to get your finger on the back? All right, no, no, second.
On discussion here, but all of them.
It's only, it's only nine days.
It's only nine days.
Yeah, it's all.
Employee handbook. I know you sent this out to us. Did you want some time to review it, employee?
I'll ask them to review it, yeah.
Okay, so, at this stage, Jennifer, next one for approval for the one. All right, we're doing, we're doing. Phone stipend. So I know it's in the contract, right? Did they?
Right, so we asked, a couple of three employees that asked if we could stop paying them for a month instead of once a year. I didn't have a lot of.
Are you okay with that? Can you give?
I don't mind either way, if some of them want it monthly and some of them want it at the end of the year.
Oh, I think it's one or the other.
One or the other.
It's one or the other, yeah.
So that, just get it together through.
Yeah, I decided they want it monthly, once a year.
Yeah, remember, remember to sit down.
Right.
I think there's more, they can't get it, I don't know.
Right, yeah.
It's more worker, right, I know, so it's more.
All right, so yeah, we'll leave that in the hands of you, the union to decide what you want, it's gonna be. Reorganization. So, since most of you know that I have, uh, I will be taking up you. So, since most of you know that I have, uh, I will be taking up new residency, I'm gonna leave the reorganization in the hands of you two fine gentlemen to decide what you'd like to do. One is gonna be the chairman, the other one's gonna be the clerk, the, uh, the clerk, so. So.
Should I make a nomination?
No, you, you guys decide, I, I, just so you know, my expectation is I will be in through the end of August.
Right.
And that will, that will end my tenure here.
Okay.
I'm still a resident, at least through the end of August, so. So, who, you, you can make a nomination, or you can make a.
I'd make a nomination of chairing of Derek Martin.
I will second, I will second that. I'll step down for my current championship, second. Is it, is there any other, is there any other nominations? All those in favor? All those opposed, yes, have it. So, now you can nominate him for clerk.
That's why I nominate Jason, who is for clerk.
And I'll second that. Any other nominations? I don't see any. All those in favor, all opposed, the eyes have it. Congratulations, you wanna take over now, you wanna just?
No, finish it off, please.
I would, uh, uh, accept a nomination to reappoint Jeff Plute as superintendent. So, is it second?
Yes, second.
All those, all opposed, the eyes have it, and I would accept the nomination to reappoint Tina Braga as clerk treasurer, so.
Name is second.
On discussion, and all the table, all opposed, the eyes have it. Next regular meeting, so, in the past, we've always skipped August, but I don't know if.
I don't know if we want to, yeah, especially after talking to Chuck, it's a little meeting.
Yeah.
And I have, if they don't want to tell me I'm working on a meeting, I'll give them all time.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I am, so.
If, if. Oh. I will, I will, he better have, report, he better have everything in August for us.
Can, can we?
The second Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that's my, I'm on vacation that week, so, either the week before, which is the week you're away?
I am away the week of the seventeenth, so a week after.
So, do you wanna do it the week before, do you wanna do it the end of that week, like Thursday, the?
Thursday, the sixth.
The sixth?
I'm not agreeing with you.
Thursday, the sixth?
Yeah. Go for it.
Okay, Thursday, the sixth, it's four o'clock?
I have a call, uh, until four, yeah, till four o'clock, it's fine.
Okay. I don't wanna see what you mean, one point, you want to leave? Yeah. You're square. I can see, I can see, whatever, whatever. Stay on the finance committee, because that doesn't have a residency requirement, it's not a lot of. Yeah, they want you to, so, at least we get a few more minutes. Alright, so the sixth, public input, um, motion to go into executive session under provision thirty-eight, section twenty-one, non-union personnel.
Second.
Discussion, we will not be coming back out of the regular session, we will straight to a now. All the table?
I.